City of Lamarck, City Council Regular Agenda of August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three, beginning at six P M. Council chambers at eleven oh nine B by your role Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to the section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer in Quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be. And will physically be present at eleven oh nine B by your role Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location. On on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called order. Would you give us a roll call? And here it's on online. Because it doesn't sound like it's being amplified in the.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Are we sure they can hear us online? Okay, let's proceed. Everyone heard what we said previously. Is that correct? Very good. Okay, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C will not be with us tonight.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
Amen.
Present. Thank you, Kiera. We will ask Mayor Protem Campeon to lead us in our vacation. Councilmember Ross to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Let's stand.
We bow our heads. Oh, Holy One. You're known by many names and 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 living within us all in the spirit of life. We ask for your blessings upon all of us as a people living in this great community of Lamarck. We are, we ask for your blessings, especially for us who sit up here or ask to lead our community. And we and we pray that you help us as we make decisions on questions of how do we fix this? Or or what do we need to do? Or what do we have to change? And most of all, how do we best listen to all of us as members of the community? Please remind us that no matter where we live, everyone, everyone is our neighbor. And that we're called upon as people of your people to respect and protect each of us, especially those that are the least among us. In your holy name, we pray always. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're at item four presentations. The first presentation appears to be an introduction of Mr. Aaron Hoosier. Mr. Aaron Hoosier, who I assume is Mr. Garcia's choice for our new human resources coordinator, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. I'd like to just welcome Mr. Aaron Hoosier to come to the podium to introduce himself. We had an entire panel of folks who took part in this process. We're very happy to welcome Mr. Hoosier. He actually was very excited. He started an entire week early. Today was supposed to be his first day, but he was able to get his stuff done and doing us a week early. So we're happy to have him. Mr. Hoosier's got over fifteen years of experience, has his SHRM and his P H R certifications, as well as his bachelor's in human resources, and we're excited to have him on our team. Thank you very much, Mayor. Mr. Hoosier.
I'm going to try to compose myself, but um, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to really embracing this side of my career. I come from private sector, but it has been a. A lifelong dream to to serve as a public servant. And I'm hoping that this is going to be the start of something amazing. You get from me a commitment to care about your. People here because they're the most important people, but also the people in the community as well. And I'm looking forward to the day when I can say that I'm a Lamarck resident. You know, and I'm just so thankful to be here right now, and I hope that I can live up to the high standards that Lamarck has. And. You know, I'm I'm here to serve. Thank you all so much for this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's all welcome with a round of applause. Four two, updated citywide agenda platform for council boards and commissions. Is that a Mrs. Nance? Or?
It's a collaboration.
Mr. Pritchett, please, please approach.
In this minutes, please, sir. I think we did this primarily as a collaboration effort. Due to all of the messages that I get on social media or emailed or whatever. As far as clarification for the software update that the that our system had. That's something that is part of their ongoing maintenance as far as the agenda software to. You know, as we get further into the future, their user interface, which is the fancy way to say what we see when we type in. You know, a web address or anything like that has updated. And because we have gotten so many kind of requests about how to properly use it, we found it best. To kind of use this time in order to do that. Thank you. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that we pointed out where a lot of the questions do come up. Happens to be in how to look up agendas and minutes of the past. So when you come to this page by default, what you will see, and and again, we come to this page by going to the city of Lamarck dot org. Under government, we go under agendas and minutes. And then it will bring you to this page. So where it sits as it currently does when you come to the page is defaulted to today. And so today being August the twenty eighth, it shows each and everything that is listed for the day. If you look on the left side of the page, all of the dates that are bolded, or you can see that they're singled out. And again, I'm in August of two thousand and twenty three. If I go back to July, all the dates that are bolded, all the dates that are singled out are days that. That meetings happened in the city of Lamarck. As you can set, as you can see, on July sixth, this was not only, this was a cemetery board agenda. On the tenth, that following Monday, City Council on the eleventh, regular Board of Adjustments. So again, I'm going to go back to today being August the twenty eighth. So if you wanted to see that agenda, you would just click on there and it would bring up in separate page. Now, however, one of the the major questions that we've gotten are about years past. To inform the public whole, you know, as a whole. Nothing from the old system was deleted out and is still currently in this system. I understand that it visually has changed. I understand that how having to find things a bit have changed. And again, that is due to their updated user interface on on the software side of this. So when we, if you're looking for a specific date in history. Twenty seventeen, I want to know about August fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. That regular city council agenda, when I click on that, it will bring it up right there. It will bring up the minutes, all of the above. So again, in history, everything is done right here in this graphical calendar. You can also use from date. So if I wanted to look twenty seventeen from January. January first, and I wanted to look until. Twenty seventeen of December thirty first, it would give me everything in that timeframe. I could then from the from the year of twenty seventeen, say, well, I know what I'm specifically looking for. Happens to be a Parks Board agenda in twenty seventeen. In doing so, it will give you every single meeting that came up in that year. As a PDF, be able to download minutes are attached as well. I hope this is some clarification to everyone here as well as everyone online that has been trying to seek. As far as how to navigate this, I I'll be the first to tell you, there always comes a little bit of. You know, a little bit of of training when it comes to updated I T software. It's been kind of a definition for a long time. If you need any, if you have any specific questions. I know people were asking, how do I look up years past? How do I get all the meetings of a specific year and so on and so forth? I'm always available. You can email P R at cityoflamarck.org. You can email the city clerk, city clerk at cityoflamarck.org, or our personal email addresses attached to us here in the city. We want to be a viable resource and how to not only use this, but so that you can find all the information appropriately. I've already begun setting up some time carved out with citizens that were trying to figure out how to do it. Again, as as just a presentation, this went live for us a little bit sooner than we had expected. We thought it was going to go live this past week. It went live, I believe, a week or two early. And and so really, this is just a formality to make sure that we make sure that all residents and citizens looking to find past agendas and minutes. Current agendas for the city of Lamarck and all of our boards and commission meetings understand how to access it. I'll take any questions if.
I actually have. Sorry.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah. You know, I brought it to y'all today and I couldn't pull up a calendar on my phone.
Yeah, let's uh. Let's let's get that one and then and then try to see if we can.
Let me grab my phone.
Well, we need to get the question, we need to get the question. On the recording. Right, yeah, so that we can get that on on the recording.
James Osteen, twenty twelve, Joe Donna. I talked to Cal and he pulled it up and couldn't pull up the calendar on our phones. You remember that conversation?
So I can kind of jump in here for you. Um, on whereas there is like a calendar icon on the mobile version. And I apologize that I don't have it open right now. It'll, the only thing it'll do is it'll take you to today. So if you're using the web version and you're trying to go in the past, because it'll show you everything that's future, you'd have to scroll up and scroll through. You can sort it out by the board, but you can't necessarily use when you're using that just generic mobile version. You cannot search a specific date yet. It is something that we've put in a request for, but the platform hasn't hasn't gotten back with us on that one yet.
That's something we won't be able to do though. When we're in a council meeting, if you want to look at something and go back.
Yeah, let's, but James, we're gonna have to get up, we we have to hear it on the recording. So yeah. And then let's uh. So yeah, if we can't get it clarified, we have.
It makes it hard if we can't look on our phone here like before the council meeting or something during it. We want to check something out like previous year or something. We won't be able to do that if we can't get it on our phone.
So whereas it's still accessible, it may be not be as user friendly on our mobile version yet. Like I said, we do have a ticket in with our developers to see if we can get that fixed, but I have not received a response yet to get to say yes or no, that is a feature that's coming and how soon.
You know, the old system worked fine. It wasn't confusing.
Well, we're able to fix that. We got our cheat out some links on the website. And and then that'll start working on your phone.
So y'all gonna fix that for the citizens? Good.
Appreciate that.
I just, thank you, James, I just want to let you know, I just logged in and I was looking at the agenda. And the calendar is here too. How the past, you're looking at the past.
So what they're trying to do, Mayor Protem, is because when you're on there on the mobile device, and this is kind of what Kyle is referring to is because. Not everybody has the newest phone. Not everybody has the newest operating system. And so what you have to do is literally scroll. Until you get to, basically, if I'm trying to look for January, I have to scroll downward so that I get back to January. Oh, that that. You can still find it to Councilman Osteen's point, you are to Kira's point to Councilman Osteen's concern is it's still accessible. But I can't type in the way I hear on the desktop, twenty seventeen, January is what he is referring to. And so what Kyle's point is, is that through some of those updated links, it will just kind of expand the control on the mobile device. I think this kind of comes at the same time, you know, and and I know council knows this, but you know, our website's being updated. Our our mobile application is being updated, all the above. We're trying and. Because these are all inter synced systems. When all of those updates go live, it will able for us to just plug and play some of these items because they're not plug and play right now. I T will have to go in there and to make a specific rule so that they can be accessed this view on the mobile. And that's what we're trying to update with. The company that we pay that you that gives this to us. So our, the company that we use for this is also the same company that does our mobile app, the same company that does our website. And that's who does it for all municipalities, to my knowledge, throughout the state of Texas and even beyond.
Let's uh, Mr. Mitch, did you, did you want to, please approach?
Number Mitch, twenty four North Curlew. My question is, I haven't, and I've heard some from some other folks, we're not getting the notices. That we had signed up for. So is this part of the system change?
It is part of the system change, yes.
Do we maybe send a something out to the public to say, you got to re-sign up, you know, because it's. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Yes, sir. Mr. Mitch, to your point, I just wanted to make sure that I said it in the mic for anyone at home to hear. So it is the same update. So thank you for bringing that up. Like I said, we went live. The company made us live ahead of schedule. So whereas we would have kind of put some of these notifications out, hey, if you see a gap. Or if you notice something on the mobile app versus something else, I believe another citizen even. And even our Public Works Director notified me on Saturday about the mobile app. And as well as the notifications not getting to every single person. So this week. This next two weeks until our next council meeting, please take this, keep your eyes on social media notifications that we put out. I will be putting out in the our community pages at Delaney, Salt Grass, Brondo Pines, all of the above. These, because of that update, I can't carry over everybody who was on that list. And again, we would have prepared a little bit beforehand. If we hadn't have been put live ahead of time. Now, that's not an excuse, but I want to make sure that if you do see this information, you are sharing it with your neighbors. You're making sure that everybody is signed up for not only the emergency notifications, but community outreach notifications and all the above. Because I can't copy you over legally, I can't do it. I'm sorry, but I don't look good in orange. And you know, I I can say to everybody, re-sign up, re-sign up, re-sign up, which we will be doing over the next two weeks. But this weekend, thank you, Rick, again, for Public Works, all the water things that we had going out. We did notice that they did not go out to everyone. And then we did put in a ticket to the organization, the company that does monitor all this again. And so if you see this information, share it with your neighbors, share it with your church groups, all of the above. Because whether it's hurricane season, whether it is a plant burn off, we want to make sure that everybody is getting these notifications. As well as notifications, God forbid, if there's one more low pressure problem.
Any, any more questions? Go ahead.
Some observations. You mentioned that it defaults to the today's meeting date, and I have not seen that earlier than. I've seen it before and it defaults back to August fifteenth or something, because I was looking for today's meeting.
Yes, sir.
And and it does not, at least it was not my experience. And and this is in the for what it's worth, I guess, go back to my prayer. How do we listen? I I guess in my own world. Things like this in terms of of something that's important as how we communicate us all. In in terms of the process in my world, I would have brought this to my board, first of all. I would have experimented and made my board aware of this is what we're going to be doing to to improve. Or these are some updates that are anticipated as opposed to just, wow, here we have this change. And I understand that you guys got surprised in terms of the of the vendor. But like I said, I'm just bringing this up in the for what it's worth department. We're especially, and I can say this, appreciate this as I get older. It's it's irritating, quite frankly, sometime to deal with these changes. It really is when we're so accustomed to something in in a particular manner. And it's, and that's why, as I said, I had an older board too. I always engage them in the process. And then the feedback from any of the council members in this case perhaps would have been helpful in 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 terms of this this introduction. I just want us to do better in that area, right? Because the last thing I want is to get the calls that I did get is to what the heck's going on, Joe? Because Joe didn't have any answers either. That's 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 what I'm saying, sure, for what it's worth.
As far as the board, sir, you know. I I guess in better understanding what you're trying to say, you're talking about before they do a software update?
In any, any, anything that concerns how we communicate.
Sure.
In my, in my experience and in my world.
I know, I fully understand what you mean. I guess what I'm trying to understand is we don't dictate to them when they do an update.
No, I understand, I understand that. But by the way, this technology I brought to the city with with the. When when the city manager was coming in as a result of an introduction at T M L, right? We had to have better on this side.
Sure.
And and that's to say that that in visiting with the vendors initially, there were at least their representations to me. We're, we're, we're going to collaborate, right? We're going to be entered, we'll work with you in introducing this. It's not just going from one change overnight, right? Right? So all all I'm saying is that in in there, there's a need that this be transitioned appropriately. And and part of that transition process, once again, in my experience, is getting feedback from. And in my case, I say the board, in this case.
Sure.
The city council members, right? In terms of.
Or staff or boards and commission members, absolutely.
Selected.
Yes.
You know, past members of council.
Yes, sir.
You've got two of them here, that that sort of introduction, that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
And and then then it's a smooth process that we.
Absolutely.
That's how I look at it. That's all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions? The web developer, the the app developer.
Yes, sir.
Who who who's that?
Civic, Civic Plus. Yes, sir. Civic Plus, our notification system is called Civic Ready. Our city clerk side is called Civic Clerk and so on and so forth. Yes, sir.
Civic Plus. And and I heard you say earlier that also they. Uh, developed our mobile app.
Correct. Yes, sir. Which is currently down. Since Saturday.
So are we having a problem with our mobile app?
They're fixing it.
Are we having a problem with the mobile app with this? Uh, with this app being able to be used efficiently on.
Since Saturday. Yes, sir. And I've already addressed that with them and I've been on the phone with them all day.
Why did it happen? All of a sudden started to happen on Saturday?
It happened Saturday when they did a main, I'm sorry. It happened Saturday when they had maintenance on their side and they updated things. Our app was affected by that. And so that affects notifications that affected a lot of different things.
So prior to that, it was working, working.
Say that again.
Prior to that, it was working.
Yes, sir. Prior to that, it was working. It just so happened that, you know, we noticed all of this in in a time when Rick and I. You know, we're talking so much, I think our wives were a little jealous. But when there's low pressure and we're trying to get that information out, especially over the weekend. You know, we tried to resort to all the issues trying to track down people, you know, on social media that emailed through, that were texting, all of the above. Of some of these issues. And it was just because I think a lot of people weren't receiving the notification.
What what was your, Debbie, what what was your your? Information campaign? How how did you, oh, how did, how did the government, our our government? How did we communicate in campaign form to our community? What this new app would do, what, how it would work, how it would operate? How did we do that?
So our new app hasn't updated yet with this problem since Saturday, they're updating the whole thing. So I guess the new app, what you're referring to, sir, prior to Saturday, it working had been established in the city of Lamarck.
How did we roll that out is what I'm asking.
That was prior to me coming in. I believe that was some years ago. What I, what I took the initiative on over the past few months is making, making sure that this app didn't fall by the wayside. Now, I can look at the analytics and see how many people use this app. I can look at the analytics and know what they use it for and all the above. You know, it's it's not so much in depth that I know. You know, their location and every, all of their information, but it does tell me how many users are.
So since your time here, have you, have you been aware of any issues concerning this app?
Yes, sir. And we have addressed those at at least four different points since my tenure here. There's been some gaps and.
How did you educate and inform the public of those issues and our resolutions as a government to those issues?
I. I would, I guess I would have to say that I had. I think some of those issues that were there were not issues that necessarily were known to the general public. Because they would have been outdated links, they would have been outdated documents. And so what I did was update them with the time so that, and it gives us a calendar report so that when we get closer. To the end of the year, such as November, December, it knows that we need to start updating that for the next upcoming year.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I I I think the point that I'm making more is as we move into these new innovations.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garcia. Mr. Garcia. This is, this is really extremely important. As we move into these new innovations. We need to be more mindful of how we are to roll those out, how we're to educate our community members on their usage. Um processes.
Sure.
Uh that have to be put in place as well as any questions they may have. I think that we have an opportunity to do a better job if we're saying that we're expanding our communications division. Uh so that we can completely inform our public, this is an area, obviously, that there's there is uh some sort of disconnect.
Absolutely, and I think even the example that we use tonight, Miss Nance and I had planned. To do another video segment to really just show people, and we would film it. And then we would distribute that not only in our city news flash as well as social media and all of the above. But due to the timing, especially with the problems that we experienced over the weekend, we found it. Important for it, this to be addressed today, for this to be addressed to council and all the above before we. Distribute information and yalled it, and you get calls about things and and don't know what we're talking about. Because we put a video out thirty minutes ago and you haven't been on Facebook for forty-five minutes. You know, we tried to take that into consideration, and so we wanted to inform. A in the official, you know, s- city council space. And then promote and publish the video of basically a screen recording with a voiceover on how to use. This information of any questions, concerns can be directed to the following and so on and so forth, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garcia.
Uh nothing further on this side of mayor, we've uh made notes of what we need to do moving forward to. Is making notes on what everybody had to say, will be prepared, thank you.
Thank you. Four three, certificates of obligation, Stiefel.
Yes, uh thank you. We've got uh Mr. Angst here on the uh call. Who has joined us, will also be sharing our screen with the new table. I'd like to take a brief moment to discuss what was on the updated agenda form that we put out. Uh essentially during the budget process, we were asked to bring forward. The current C O debt balances and what allowable expenses we could have for those. Uh we brought those forward during the budget process and uh wanted to make sure that everybody had that information uh open. For uh any questions to be um asked during that time. Uh further, following the budget workshop, there was a list of list of um potential expenses for projects that we needed to confirm. With our bond council to assure that they were allowable expenses. And uh we essentially went line by line, item by item, and completed that 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 aspect of it. And what we have to share with you now, as well as with conversation from uh Brad, who is here from. From from Stiefel to have this discussion, I'll turn it over to him and we'll also share the table. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, sorry, there's them too.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to be with you, this is Brad Angst. I'm joined by my colleague David Webb uh uh at Stiefel Public Finance, we serve as the city's municipal advisor. Uh and and essentially help you with your facility and in project funding. This this topic of uh certificates of obligation, we're not um uh here to start a certificate of obligation here today, just to be clear. As Mr. Garcia just noted, uh what we're trying to do is is clear out and um make sure that the city has. Um spent all their past bond proceeds um and any of the residual amounts from from prior. Uh bond issuances before you even uh start to go down a road of of looking at additional financing maybe in the future, but. Um and so through that process, um uh the city provided this this worksheet here. Um and we applaud uh your efforts to identify these amounts and make sure that they go out the door first. That is a very important item and something uh that's being looked at more uh within our industry by uh the I R S and regulators, so. Um and so they're on the top left are are uncommitted balances from some of your past bonded transactions, some. Uh residual amounts, you know, projects have either been completed, um and there are some some leftover amounts, and so. Uh in reviewing this, we wanted to identify, well, how can these amounts be spent moving forward? Um and and it was important to look at each individual one, because there are rules that say whatever you originally. Bonded for or borrowed for, you need to stay in the same category of types of projects that. You initially and originally approved or your or your prior councils had approved, and so. And so we went through those um going back to two thousand seven, twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen. Uh and the recent one uh in twenty twenty and went through that uh with staff and went through it with bond council, really. Uh bond council uh was kind of the definitive and final voice uh in this matter. Uh but we went through all these, we identified what the original uh uses were, and then we wanted to make sure. Uh you know, how the city was was looking to allocate these these funds uh on future projects fell into that same category. And so I I I am pleased to report the uh suggested uh distribution and and. Use of these residual amounts as proposed uh here tonight by Mr. Garcia do fit within. Uh the rules and regulations and within uh the original use of those projects and. Uh we are signed off on on this moving forward, your bond council, Mr. Jonathan Preles has also. Uh signed off on this, um and we think this is a, you know, a great step in uh moving towards spending these funds and then. Uh potentially able to tackle future projects that you may have. If that, I'll I'll take a pause and see if you have any uh questions.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
First question I have for you, are there uh uh Mr. Shane Manager?
Yes, sir.
Are there anticipated expenditures? In the uh twenty-three, twenty-four budget that could be covered by the residual amounts?
I'd have to look back specifically uh to see if any of them could be covered, but right now we're running a pretty tight ship. Uh based on what we've uh gone through our our taxes here. It's too soon to say, I I I'd be remiss to probably tell you, probably not, eh without a loss of somewhere else.
I understand the the loss is going to always be a loss. All my simple question is, are there anticipated, and if you don't have an answer, that's fine, I just get back to me, right? So I'm not looking for something immediate, but are there anticipated expenditures? That would be in any of these categories of utilities and things that we have. From general revenue that that could be covered by uncommitted dollars, that's my question. Okay, second question, and this is to bond council. Uh can the city's general fund be reimbursed? For expenditures that have that have occurred in these categories during the the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year?
Generally, yes, you you sometimes have to uh make plans for that before. You have those expenditures, though, and what I mean by that is um. There has to be uh sometimes a reimbursement resolution put in place prior to it. Um however, there was uh indication and official action from the council to use it on these type of projects. Um and so I I do believe there's some flexibility there. Uh bond counsel, your your legal counsel is not on with us this evening, uh but we can certainly. Um get get with him and and get you an answer on that this week, he is uh very responsive and and up to speed on the allowable uses here. So if you all, so if you all gave us what those expenditures were from this from this current fiscal year. Um and what those items were, we could certainly uh have those reviewed quickly and get that answer.
All right, that was my question.
No, any more questions?
So on this particular sheet right here, this is what we talked about during budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And and this is what we 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 decided that.
Yeah.
Uh those funds could be attributed to that, and our bond console has approved that, that it fits in those categories.
Exactly correct, uh the the task was handed to 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 us to make sure that we went through that process. Checked all the uh projects that we had in mind, made sure the math was accurate a hundred percent and triple checked with them, and that's exactly what we've done here.
So what Councilman Joe uh Joe Campion is talking about is any other monies that may be left over. Can that go back into the general? But it looks like that they've all been accounted for.
Everything's allotted for here. Um I think the two-part question was, is there any expenses that we incurred in this current fiscal year that could be retroactively reimbursed?
No.
Um which as far as that amount or any other expenses or any amounts available for some of these project in next year's budget. And my my suggestion right now would would be to say more than likely not, but I can go back and and check, but I I finally. Very, very doubtful that we could overextend ourselves.
You 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 done?
Yeah.
It it's it's interesting, Mr. Garcia, that Ms. Yancy. That Ms. Yancy looked at a document that that or looked at information on a document that. Um you created as it tried to reduce to writing our sentiments and 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 our direction. I I said that to say this is a great document for accounting purposes, but it does not tell the story of what we did as a council. And many times the community, the community is unaware of what count, what action the council has taken. The council has taken some very serious, thoughtful and deliberate action as relates to these certificates of obligation. For years, they have been meandering, lingering around our city coffers. Uh and councils pass, which I've been a part of, we have uh not directed those funds, this council did. And so what I think would be helpful is that uh we would somehow reduce this to some sort of resolution form. That would say this council during budget process um was made aware of those opportunities for our certificates of obligation. And we directed you uh to do all those things that we agreed upon as a council. Uh with all those dates, so that the community can actually see what this council has done to try to. Uh resolve some of those lingering questions about those certificates of obligation. Uh this is, this again is great for accounting purposes, but I think we need to have more uh more narrative so the so the community can understand, if you can understand what I'm saying.
Yes, Mayor, and if it's okay, I could quickly put that together, bring that back for the next meeting. There was discourse about bringing it to this one and.
Sure.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Not a problem. Any uh more questions as it relates to item four three?
Um Mayor, just a inquiry, this is not an action item for.
This is not an action item tonight.
Information.
Yes, information.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Item four, for presentation Gulf Coast Center, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Gulf Coast Center to come up, they are one of our new partners, as we've mentioned uh. Shortly uh upon my my arrival, actually, while I was sitting in the audience before my actual commencement. There was a lot of a discussion about uh helping folks in the community with mental health needs and so forth, and I wanted to take a chance to applaud. Our police department for taking the initiative to find other resources and ways for to provide service for our residents, and this is a great resource to have. I'd like to turn the floor over, sir, thank you so much, if you can introduce yourself and let us know who G C C is.
Yes, sir, uh good evening. Uh council, my name is Jerry Freshar, I'm with the Gulf Coast Center. We're the local mental health authority for Galveston, Brazoria Counties with the public system. Uh people that come to see us generally don't have health insurance to be able to go to a private psychiatrist or a private psychiatric hospital, so we operate the. The the uh psychiatric outpatient clinics in in both counties for kids and adults, substance abuse services. My, what I'm here to talk to you about today is is crisis services, services for folks in the city of Lamarck that uh. When they getting into a mental health crisis. Uh what we what we know is that very often law enforcement officers don't have a lot of alternative to uh taking people to emergency rooms. Who are not really set up to do psychiatric care for the most part, or and sometimes even in the worst scenario jail. So what we, one of the things we're doing at the Gulf Coast Center, I operate the crisis services, it 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 we include includes the hotline. Uh we got psychiatric inpatient services, and we've got mobile services that go out and meet peace officers. And go to E Rs and go to schools and and in it and in it, intervene with people that are in crisis, just anywhere they're found in in the county uh. Some of the things that are kind of emerging, uh best practice models or things like you might have heard about, the city of Galveston created the coast team. Where they started to embed Gulf Coast Center crisis workers in with a a G P D unit. Uh I have Ariel Gray with me today, she's our supervisor, she's on the coast team, and I've promoted her for as a team leader to get out and meet with. Other police departments. We've met with with uh Chief Aragon, and we're getting out to other departments to see, you know, what what arrangement is best for your city. We can do what we've traditionally done, but there might be some interest in uh maybe in the long term doing some co-response. And so with the city, the chief had a good idea, uh he's he suggested that for the next year. If I could have a a Gulf Coast Center crisis worker come out to the police shift changes. And just hear about where they think that the uh the needs are, uh talk about people that they that police have encountered in crisis. Recently that we can go and do outreach with, and we're all about that, that's in this interlocal. Also, just a couple of other uh things that I that I can offer to uh to your local law enforcement, one is. Training for your nine-one-one operators. That if they get a call to nine-one-one from someone who just needs mental health assistance. They're not at, there's no risk to public safety, they're not in the act of trying to harm themselves. They don't need a peace officer on the scene or E M S, they just need a clinician. That we can train your nine-one-one operators to do a warm handoff to the Gulf Coast Center hotline for those calls, and then we can have a clinician response. Sometimes, like we said, with the co-response model, uh Galveston got foundation money to to initiate that. Uh we know we're not ready to recommend that to the city yet, necessarily a co-response model, we need to take the next year and talk about it. But one thing we can do for today, which is also in this interlocal, is offer a virtual clinician. Will come to any crisis, no matter where it is in the county, what hour it is, what day, we're around the clock. But if it's ever uh advantageous for the officer to have uh to link to us immediately virtually. We offer that that as well, some some departments are taking us up on that and have good success. I know the chief wanted me to also make just briefly mention uh another project. That uh Galveston County is is partnering with Gulf Coast Center on, and you've probably seen this in in the Galveston County News, it's called. An extended observation unit. This is very much needed in our in our county, because when law enforcement encounters somebody that's in a crisis. Very often what they find is that the psych, the state funded psychiatric hospital beds are full. And what that creates is a situation where people have to be brought to emergency rooms to wait there. Until the next psychiatric hospital bed is available, and it it's not the best arrangement uh. That the E Rs uh your the emergency room in Texas City does a good job of trying to hold on to people until we can find that next psychiatric bed. But it's 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 far from perfect, uh very often uh the emergency holes that they're on, that police have issued. To the E Rs expire before you find the psychiatric bed, unfortunately. And sometimes they just get full of the E Rs and they need to, they need to go ahead and discharge those people, and it doesn't, it's it's not an effective linkage to the Gulf Coast Center, I'll put it that way. This extended observation unit would be an alternative in county. Where law enforcement could bring someone for a crisis or jail diversion. To a facility that would do forty-eight hours of psychiatric examination. Emergency medications. And then we make a decision from there at this extended observation unit, whether to transfer them on. To the longer term psychiatric hospital beds, if that's what they need. But some people, they're stabilized uh just with some emergency medications there in the mercy, in the extended observation unit, so that's. That that a facility of that type is coming to Galveston County, the Galveston County. Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, that's a uh. The county judge, the D A, defense bar, uh all the different county officials. Uh on this uh coordinate council have decided to bring the E O U. To Galveston County because they they know law enforcement needs these resources and our citizens. Because they, they know law enforcement needs these resources and our citizens do too. I think the thing to know is, uh. They're looking at county-owned properties. And at this point, the proposed site is, uh, on South Oak in the, in Lamarck. Which is very good for Lamarck, I believe, because not only do you have access to mobile crisis services. Peace officers can drop somebody at the EOU and get back into service. And that's us operating the verse, observation unit. We will be making sure that people get linked care that they need. And, and before they leave the facility. So, Chief, was there anything I left out?
Well, just want to mention, connect some dots, uh, Councilman Yancy and, you know, ex-councilwoman, um, McCullough. One of your concerns or some of your concerns were making sure that we got coverage for mental and sexual assault, family violence. And trafficking, but we did it. We've got, she's, we're going to be coming up later, uh, well, a few minutes. And talk about the services that the resource crisis center can provide. They provide services for family violence. Or, uh, sexual assault and also human trafficking. We had a missing link. It was the mental health side. She is providing a person at PD twice a week. And she's going out with us, Kelsey Johnson, and helping us. She's a crisis intervention specialist. Hopefully soon we'll get their person down to do the same thing on the mental health side. So we've got all these bases covered. That's what I wanted to make sure you understood.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Uh, most of local departments are interested in having a, a crisis worker embedded in. Uh, we thought the, a good way to start would just be to come to shift changes and get to, get that relationship started. Let them know about existing services today. Definitely they can access, you know. This interlocal doesn't have any, uh, doesn't require any city funding. Uh, these are services we offer. Uh, all communities just thought we formalized it with the interlocal, if, if the city's interested.
Very good. Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe. Go ahead.
Did, I've worked with Gulf Coast Center, this is many years back, uh, in terms of, uh, some previous leadership. Yes, the leadership's all changed and, uh, but one of the challenges back then, and I don't know if it's changed or not. I haven't heard recently, but there was always a weakness in, uh, Spanish language, uh, on the outreach side. Has that improved? Have you, uh, have you, uh, expanded your Spanish-speaking staff?
We have Spanish-speaking staff, uh, in, during times, if, if I didn't have one available, we contract with the language line. It's an interpreting, it's phone interpretation. Had to use it this weekend, uh. But that is one of the requirements of a, of a, of a LMHA local mental health authorities. You have to have language translation, deaf translation, everything has got to be covered. So I think we've got that covered for you.
And one of the things, the, the second area, which, and I'm glad you have your, your other colleague here with you. And this I haven't seen any, but this is part of a community responsibility too, is outreach. Letting people know the nature of the services that are available. Mental health has a stigma that's already attached to it, a negative stigma. Uh, and, um, we have to overcome that, that, that stigma. And that's part of church groups, interfaith, uh, I, I know that's one of the, uh, areas that we're going to certainly concentrate in. Uh, with, uh, my group of, um, uh, interfaith organizations and, um, but the, um. Uh, I want to follow up with you guys in terms of outreach. How do we promote that? How do we?
Uh, that, that would be through me, sir. If, if I could come speak to any, uh, public group, uh. I, I go to schools, tick, talk to parent groups, because we have a lot of children's crisis too. Not just go anywhere, uh, really right now in last two years, I've been really focused on getting to all the local police departments. And, uh, now, you know, you're exactly right. Uh, any, anywhere I'm needed to do that myself or Ariel, we, we can, we can come out and, and let everybody get the awareness up about what we're doing.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So I'm so glad that you're here because this is the one piece that Felicia Jeffries and I talked about, your director. And so I really like some of the things that she's bringing. This council is very, uh. We have a lot of high expectations because in the past, as, uh, Councilman, uh, Compton had said, the expectation was low. Um, as a pastor's wife, where we have members and community people, um, that needed services. We did not find them at Gulf Coast Center. They were unprofessional. There were a lot of loopholes and people would have to go all the way to, uh, fifty-nine. Like you said, because there was, there were no beds, right? And so this piece, if it's done correctly. Can really help us in the area of crime and bringing that down. Because some of our, uh, residents have mental issues, like you said. So I really, I'm really looking forward to see what that framework looks like once you build it. Uh, whatever I can do to help in that area by getting some of the, uh, local pastors together to help. To, to create a pipeline of sorts, because that has been the missing, the missing piece. The other thing is the vaping issue with the, with the, uh, that law. A lot of kids that are using that to vape. Are ADHD and have mental issues and a lot of parents have no clue that right across the street from the high school is the Gulf Coast Center. Where they can get services. So like Joe said, I think we need so a propaganda campaign from you all. To get that out to all of our schools, all of our churches, Rotary Club, because the people really don't know. And there's so much growth here in Lamarck. They don't, they don't know, um, uh, they don't know what resources we have. And now that we're going to be housing your center here in Lamarck, we definitely want to make sure. That that community is protected around Oak as well. I know that's your district. Um, and, um, but I, but I do think it's needed so, uh, people won't have to go all the way to Houston. And that was, I mean, I, you don't know how many times I've had to take people all the way to fifty-nine because we did not have beds available. Or, so it, it's been a major piece that was missing. And so whatever we can do to help, uh, build that framework.
I appreciate that. If you met Felicia, you know, we're, we're getting the word out.
I had a two-hour meeting with.
Absolutely. We've been to, we've been going to all the schools and just asking where do your unmet needs and vaping was been a, has been a big one. And most of them had, uh, prevention, but they didn't have treatment services and we're putting those in. Uh, so yes, we will be getting the word out, uh, to everywhere we can. Really appreciate the time this evening and look forward to the project.
I just want to say thank you for coming out to the front with coffee and putting. People in my district who are there at that meeting, their, their minds at ease on how the situation's going to go. And how you, your event center, or you're not event center, but your community center there is going to help us in the long run also. So much appreciated.
Have much better outcomes, having a dedicated psychiatric facility that's in that business. That that's what they want to do. That's the patients they want to welcome in and, and get them the best care in that, in that brief time we have them. So. Emergency rooms do a good job. They do what they have to do, but this is, this is something dedicated for this.
Do you want to assist?
Just to remind you that you have an item coming up on this, an action item to approve this MOU. And the MOU was only for the PD portion of it, as far as having them here. So we can have that warm handoff and the training for staff. Uh, these are other things that are coming up down the line, but I just want to let you know that we listened, we heard your concern. And we're trying to find other ways and partners to try to address those concerns for our residents.
Would you one more time? Or I don't know if you've done it earlier, but would you, if you haven't done it earlier? And if you have one more time, give us the intake hotline number.
Intake hotline number? Yeah, the crisis hotline, I have to look it up on my phone, but it, you can call nine-eight-eight, nine-eight-eight is a three-digit number now. They took the ten-digit national hotline number, made it nine-eight-eight. It's like nine-one-one eight-eight-eight.
For mental health.
I'm sorry, I don't have it by memory, but I got it here for you. And it's really important to have the local line because, uh. Sometimes the national hotline, good news about that is my Harris County hotline that I contract with for our local number. They also answer the nine-eight-eight number, but if that, if that gets overwhelmed, they might roll a local call over to some other hotline in the nation. And I just make sure people also have our, our number I'm going to give you because, uh. I just want them to, uh, if there's every, any kind of issue with the national hotline, just hang up and call the local number. Because that's where you'll get Gulf Coast people. Uh, so the, the local number is eight-six-six-seven-two-nine-three-eight-four-eight. For mental health crisis in, in our two counties.
That's Galveston and Brazoria County.
Galveston and Brazoria, yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, citizen's participation, limited to three minutes per, per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who signed up and speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, give the mayor, the, or the presiding officer your full legal name, address and item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed and personnel matters. Uh, should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are participating by telephone. Press the unmute button if you are attending via Zoom, uh, smartphone, tablet or computer. Uh, it should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. If you are in attendance via, if you are here, uh, in person, uh, you may approach the podium to my left, to your right, and you'll be heard. Kyle, is any persons online wishing to speak?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Joseph Lowery, twenty-five oh-three Cedar Drive. Um, quite a few issues tonight. Uh, I guess I'll start with my conversation with City Hall today refusing to. Uh, identify who's running for office. Uh, I don't think that's right. I don't think, I, I don't know if that's legal. It seems kind of oppressive to me. Uh, but I think that a citizen has the right to know who's running for office, whether or not they want to jump into that field or not. So I would like that to be addressed immediately and I expect the phone call in the morning. Mr. Garcia of who's running for District C. Second thing I want to talk about is our. Mayor's living situation. Previously, he ran our former mayor off. For not living in the city of Lamarck. At that time. I can prove our mayor. Our current mayor was not living in the city at that time, and I can do that with a certified private investigator report. Now, I would just hope that the mayor would hold himself to the same standard that he held Mr. Hawking to. And he would resign. And the citizens also have a right to know. Why a restraining order was issued. Against Mayor Keith Bell.
Hey, uh, Joseph, you really need to avoid the personal attacks here. We're, we're starting, eh, the living situation.
No, 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 no. There's no personal attack. It's public information. It's everything I stated was true in fact, and it's public information and the citizens have a right.
Mi- Mr. Lowery, but personal attacks can be publicized, which is where we're getting here.
Kind of like, kind of like our councilwoman, uh, lied about me having a restraining order at her last court date. So similar to that.
Mr. Lowery, we're not here. I mean, it, a last court day, that, that needs to be brought up with the judge. Um, if it was done.
Well, I, I was bringing up Gus. Go ahead and stop, stop yourself, Gus. This is my three minutes. I'm exercising my First Amendment right. It's public information and the citizens have a right to know if there's a restraining order. And the residents of the mayor. We have a right to know that. We have a right, the citizens of Lamarck, my community has every right to know that. We deserve to know that. He ran off the former mayor because he didn't live here. At the same time, he was not living here. We have a right to know. I have an, I have a right to know who's running for public office. I have a right to know that. And I was told to put in an open record request for it. I've got open records requests sitting at two years that haven't been answered. Tighten up down there. It's illegal. What's going on is beyond accidental. It's illegal activity. And it's old. It's really old.
Make your statement, Mr. Lowery.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any, any other persons online, Kyle? Very good. We'll move to those in person. Mrs. Cicely Henderson. Hello, Miss Cicely. Would you please give your name and I, I assume you're with the Resource Crisis Center? So would you, instead of your address, your organ, organization? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. Thank you for having me. Um, I am with the Resource Crisis Center of Galveston County. I'm the executive director, Cicely Henderson. And we are excited to partner with the city of Lamarck for the Safe City Initiative. And I would have to say that, um, our crisis intervention specialist that is sitting right outside of Chief Aragon's office. Is just very exciting. We are going to help people that are, um. Having sexual assaults, domestic violence or human trafficking issues. We're going to do that through ride-alongs or just making ourselves present in your police department. So that if a police officer comes back, they can easily reach out to our crisis intervention specialist. And get all the help that they need. They may need, uh, we always keep a bed open. We have a fifty-five bed shelter in Galveston that serves the entire county. So we could bring that person there, or we will take them to a forensic exam at any of the hospitals that we have MOUs with. Which are all of them in the county. And, um, I would have to say y'all are trailblazers. The only other department doing this is in Austin. And I heard about it at a conference that I went to and am really excited that we're starting with Lamarck. And, um, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer, but we are here to serve. Was also hoping I can get a picture with the city manager and the chief, because our board of directors are very excited too. So they wanted me to get a picture.
I, 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 I assume, Mr. City Manager, you can arrange that very quickly, very quickly.
Absolutely.
Are you doing that now?
We'll do it in the hall right now. We'll just go to the next slide and want to make sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are equally excited. If you remember, last year we, we partnered with RCC. We're expanding our services now. Again, in continuation to some of the services that we've said we've needed. We're finding other resources and partners to help us deliver those to our residents.
Very good. Mr. Robert Mitchich. Welcome, Robert. Name and address for the record.
Robert Mitchich, twenty-four, Nord Curlew. Um, first off, Mr. Garcia, I'd like to thank you for getting the. Holding place at the fire station online for this next election. Very much appreciated. And I know the residents appreciate that also. Uh, the other item is the scheduling of the TERS meeting. At the previous TERS meeting, uh, for the Amega Bay subdivision, that, that thing had been scheduled for August. And y'all, y'all canceled it, uh, saying, you know, we're too busy because of budget and everything. Uh, we've got, I'm speaking now as an HOA board member for Amega Bay. Uh, we have some very important decisions that we must make at our next meeting. And we're, we need some answers from the city and that TERS board is the ones that are going to propose that. Now, at the last council meeting, I said something that this needs to be scheduled. Uh, our, our, our tourist chair, uh, Mr. Doug Budwin is trying to get that rescheduled with everybody. It takes a lot. It had been done previously. Y'all canceled and now we're scrambling to try to get that done. I would ask you to please work with him directly when he submits that. To, to work with those dates that he comes up with so that we can get these things answered. It's very critical. We have a street that is collapsing. If it collapses on a fire truck that goes through there. This, this can affect safety, everything. But, you know, we've got some decisions to make. And it's not just that, but everything is hinging on this. So it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Um, my last statement is, Gus, there's no personal attack. But I agree with some things. There's been some post, actual post of some pers-. Proceedings, court proceedings, and that actually show what has been issued by court. And that actually would affect the residents of one of our members here. And it's very important that they live here. It, it's by charter. And I think that should be known to the entire council, to this administration and to the public. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. This is James Osteen. Welcome, James. Name and address for the record.
James Osteen, twenty-two Jared Donner Street in Lamarck. Uh, I want to. Reach y'all on this ordinance, on this resolution fifty-three. I believe it conflicts with our charter. Now, it reads a resolution of the city council, the city of Lamarck. Texas authorizing construction, design and engineering services for wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
What page is that?
I don't have any problem with any of that.
What page?
Uh, it's nine point three.
Nine point three, okay.
Resolution fifty-three.
Nine eleven.
Y'all see it? You gotta have it because I got it on the website.
Yeah.
Which, which document are you referring? Is it, is it, is it the actual resolution itself? Okay. None of, but which? The resolution.
It starts on one fifty-nine.
We all good? Yo.
On one fifty-nine, you said, Ross?
One fifty-nine on the agenda package.
Yes, you're cool. I see it there. I'm looking for the exact document.
Yeah, it's.
I hear this. Okay, yes, sir.
Mayor, you good with it? You good? Okay. Let's see here. Anyway, eh, no problem with the, uh, the resolution at all. That the issue I think where it conflicts with our charter is. The third paragraph, the second paragraph under now therefore be it resolved, where it says a city manager is authorized to execute. Any payments resulting from this project. You know, the project is one, one point four eight six million dollars. And, you know. Where it conflicts with our director of finance, powers and duties. Item C. One of their duties is to supervise and be responsible for the disbursement of all monies. And have control over all expenditures. To ensure that the appropriate appropriations are not exceeded. Also on section. Eight oh eight of our charter. The finance director shall have power and shall be required. To examine and prove all contracts, orders and other documents by which the city government incurs financial obligations. Having previously ascertained that monies have been appropriated and allotted and will be available when the obligation shall become due and payable. On section M of, uh. On section eight oh four of your charter, uh, item M. Approve all proposed expenditures. Unless he shall certify in writing that there is an encumbrance balance of appropriations. Your finance director. Executes all the payments, not your city manager. Yeah. Got it, got it, James. Thank you. Shaw Loftus. Welcome, Shaw. Name and address for the record, please.
Rashard Loftus, three oh nine Johnson Street. Um. I, I previously brought up some, uh, issues, some safety issues out at, uh, Mayhem Park. And I'm here today to. Say, um, thank you to Public Works and the Parks Department, City Managers Office. Because I went back out there and some of those issues have been, uh, abated and taken care of. There was a few that I saw that maybe still, they probably still in the working process, but I just wanted to. Let it be known that they did hear me. And they are taking care of it. And there were some other issues, but I had already talked to Mr. Garcia about it, so there's no need to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, let me take the liberty, uh, point of affirmation. I, I will not allow for, uh, people to. Uh, disparage my name, certainly make accusations against me without those accusations being addressed. I have been counsel for your and for any other person. Uh, that's interested. I have been for my entire service. I still am. Uh, and will continue to be in May of twenty twenty-four, when I run for reelection. A legal and physical resident of nineteen fifteen Oak Lawn, Lamarck, Texas, period, point blank, full stop. Uh, no one can tell me when or when not to access my property. Uh, secondly, uh, there is no restraining order against me, uh, point of affirmation for some sort of fiscal abuse or violence or anything of that nature. Uh, my wife and I, my wife of almost thirty years are getting a divorce. That happens in life. Uh, and certainly in that, uh, when you get a divorce, uh, they restrain your assets. We all know that. Uh, and they say to us, uh, don't move anything, don't change anything until we can get these things negotiated, uh, and a judge can sign off on it. We know that, that, that's what that's about. That's what life is. Uh, certainly those are points of affirmation that are very clear. Um, human. Uh, certainly, uh, we continue to pray for our family, uh, as we move forward. Uh, but that has not negated, and here's the issue. Uh, and I'll say this, uh, that has not negated the work that, uh, Lamarck is doing. Uh, the work that I've done as mayor, uh, we've moved forward, uh, in a significant way. Won't address this again. Uh, I've addressed it now, point of affirmation. So I'm going to move forward, uh, to do the business of Lamarck. Uh, because that's what I've been elected to do. Uh, thank you all. Let's move now. Let's move now to item. Six. Public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to hear public input regarding. Six one, proposed tax rate fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Leaving ad valorem taxes for use and operation of the municipal government of the city of Lamarck, Texas. For twenty twenty-four tax year at the tax rate of zero point four one zero eight zero. Zero five eight. Yeah, is there something that we need to certainly say or do in this, in this, uh, public hearing?
Uh, we just need to close the regular meeting.
Very good. We are closing the regular meeting at.
Uh, seven seventeen.
Seven seventeen. We are opening this public hearing on item six one at.
Seven seventeen.
Seven seventeen. Are there any persons in the audience, ten, audience tonight? Are online wishing to address item six one? Item six one, Mr. Mitchich, you may approach.
Robert Mitchich, twenty-four North Curlew. Um. The, uh, tax rate here in forty-one cents, uh, no new revenue, uh, tax rate. Uh, it's split into, you've got a, into that in your INS, which is your debt service side. Um, and you had your bonds up there. What's, what's owed currently on it? So on your debt service side. You're probably three to four cents higher. You're running about ten cents. Uh, as part of that, uh, proposed tax rate. Uh, but in the budget. That ten cent higher is more than what it takes. Or that, that ten cents, that three to four cents higher is more than what it takes to pay your debt notes. And so, um. You know, what I don't see in the budget, other than it being lumped into general fund, that that's going to. Anywhere where it's going, that additional is going to pay off. Any of that current debt. Or it's being saved for that debt. Um. Back on July twenty-third or twenty-fifth. When, uh, Stifel, uh. Financial gave the presentation on everything. They did a good job, reputable company and everything. But there were some things said, trying to get them to state that. Stacking items that are not directly debt into debt service. And you yourself, Mayor, tried to get them on two different occasions to say, you wanted them to say that it was not unethical, that it was ethical. Mr. Ranks never would say that. He would only say that there are other municipalities and cities across the state. Trying to deal with the SB. To two thousand and nineteen law. So what this comes out to? It's still the same. It's still on that debt service side. That is still accounting manipulation. It is still circumvention of that law. And it still remains unethical. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Osteen.
James Osteen, twenty-two Jerradonna. I want to say that, uh, I think the citizens really appreciate y'all. Lowering the tax rate to forty-one cents. That's almost a five cent, uh, lower. And, uh, I think they really appreciate that, you know? For years, uh, the council, and even when I was on it, we kept preaching that when things get better, we're going to start giving the taxpayer back some money. And that's what y'all have done. And I appreciate it and they do.
Thank you, James. Any other persons wishing to speak to, to item six one? Hearing number, close the public hearing at?
Seven twenty.
And we will reopen the regular meeting at?
Seven twenty.
Uh, we'll move now to item seven, minutes. Uh, Gus, if there's no objection, we'll take all at once. A seven one special city council meeting, uh, minutes of eight, ten, twenty twenty-three. Seven two, special city council minutes of eight, eight, twenty twenty-three. Seven three, special city council minutes of eight, one, twenty twenty-three. Seven four, special city council minutes of seven twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. Seven five, special city council minutes of seven twenty-four, twenty-three. Seven six, regular city council minutes of seven twenty-four, twenty-three. I will, uh, uh, first, before we entertain a motion, are there any corrections or, uh, additions? To, uh, any of those? Hearing number will move now, uh, for a motion to approve.
So move.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Item eight ordinance. Discussion possible action regarding approving eight one ordinance number letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 eight. Making appropri- uh, appropriations for the support of the city of Lamarck. For fiscal year, uh, beginning October first, twenty twenty-three and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-four. Appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal due on the city's indebtedness. And adopting the annual budget for the city of Lamarck twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. This is the first reading. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight two, ordinance number, the letter O dash two zero two three dash zero 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 nine. Levering ad valorem taxes for use and, and, and operation of the municipal government of the city of Lamarck, Texas for the twenty twenty-three tax year, providing for apportioning. Each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when she, and when same shall become delinquent if not paid. This is the first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, if I just need some clarification on this one. We're from. I don't know who's the finance person. But, uh, the, the ad valorem taxes. For the twenty-three tax year. Just a clarification, is that the twenty-three, twenty-four tax year or is that the? It would be the twenty-two, twenty, what, what, what's the tax year? Just need to be clear on that.
Are y'all able to help? The twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, twenty.
In, in support of the budget that was.
Budget. Okay, that's, that's all I need clarification.
Any, uh, any further discussion on eight two? Hearing number, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight three, ordinance number, letter O dash two zero two three dash zero zero one zero. Proposed revision of ordinance section, uh, four four dash two nine, city parks hours to stipulate that all city parks should have uniform operator, operating hours. This is the first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh. Go ahead, bro. I, I'm having difficulty with this one. Uniform, I need some more information. Uniform. Operating hours. So the little pocket park down the road here, where I see community gather in the evenings, we're gonna. We're gonna say you can't do that anymore?
If I may, um, I understand, um. Currently. There is a section in the code of ordinances that says all city parks and makes a cart have uniform hours except for Mayhem Park. Is what the ordinance currently said. What is the change being proposed by, that was brought forward, I believe by the Parks Board and staff is. Or requested is to remove that exception for Mayhem Park so that they are now. Uniform hours with the exception, I believe, uh, uh, it doesn't apply to BYU Feds. And the details of why that request, I would have to defer to Chief Aragon on, on that one. I.
Oh, and I have to say, I'm really confused. Number one, I don't think I would. Support putting hours on any of our city parks unless there's some. Some real necessity that's identified. Uh, that's, that's number one. Community parks are community parks. People go out and walk at different times of the morning. Most of the time, I see people, people walking at five o'clock in the morning. Out at, at community parks. So I, I, I don't see us now. Putting, eh, eh, how do you even enforce something like this, chief? How do you enforce this? How do you go and say to a seventy-year-old, walk, by the way, you can't be out here?
Mayor, pro temp. Most, most cities have park, like parks like we do, eight or nine. And because of the hours of darkness, things happening, uh, even if the park is lit up like, you know, Christmas tree. Uh, you, you're going to have things happen in, in the hours of darkness. So most of the parks in, in. That I've dealt with are closed during hours of darkness unless. There's an event such as, you know, we have ballgames and so forth because of the dangers. So that's why it read, it read Mayhem was the only except Mayhem. So now they're all, you know, recommending them all be the same.
See, if I can understand Highland, uh, Ma- Mac McGaffey Park, right?
Right.
That's. Something we're used to, different hours there. At least I'm used to that, right? Certain for safety purposes, but a small community park over at West Lawn, the, down on the road. The, eh, eh, the, the Legana over here.
Mayor, pro temp. If, if, if I can just clarify, we're not changing any of the other hours except for Mayhem.
It says, Gus said that authors' hours.
That there's already hours.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Remember when I spanked me, but I wasn't aware of that.
No, it reads all parks, all parks except Mayhem. That's what it reads now.
This is to bring Mayhem online with the rest of the parks.
Yeah, well, I'm still, uh, well, I'm just opposed to any, any restrictions. You know, we can't. We, we, we no longer have authority to do a curfew for youth, which I think is more important. Now we're going to go and outlaw people out, uh, on, on parks? No. The whole thing.
Okay.
What are they doing?
Any other questions?
Any further questions? Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Item nine. Resolutions, unless otherwise specified, the city manager is authorized to execute, execute all necessary documents. On final, final approval by the city attorney. Nine one, uh, resolution number R, um, dash two zero two three dash zero zero five one. Authorizing an agreement with Galveston County Elections Division for special election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussions?
So how many, um, polling stations will be open for that election? Um, so, sorry, hi. Um, Galveston County does have open polling locations. Any polling location that is ran by Galveston County. Um, our residents will be able to vote in. So if they're a polling location by their job or whatever, they can vote there. However, within the city limits, we do have to, um, the community room and the training room at the, uh, Lamarck Central Fire Station, which is on the west.
So because of the, um. The state constitutional amendments that are on the ballot, they, they decided that it was worthy of having to?
Um, yes, that did, that definitely did play a role in it. Um, it's kind of like a trend currently where November, because those are typically bigger elections, they use. Both locations and then may, they've may or may not use the fire station as a location. Um, I did speak with them and honestly, it's, it's a numbers thing. Like if. When, as more people start to use that location, it'll become a more permanent voting center. Thank you.
I have a question. Is, is this for both early voting? And the, and the, uh, election day? To have both locations?
Yes.
Oh, okay. FYI, there was, the, the county was challenged by not operating enough early, uh. Early voting locations, um, under this. Early voting locations, um, under this. Elections, uh, so I'm glad to see that we're gonna have two.
Any more questions? Here, are we with, uh, uh, a motion in a second already?
Yes, I would.
Let's call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nine two resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero five two. Authorizing the construction design and engineering services for the sanitary sewer overflow repairs at Bayou Road and Main Street, Erickson and Main Street. Uh, Caesar.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, if, uh, we remember some of these items that we brought up, we brought them up at the, at previous meetings, we brought them up during the budget workshop. And we're formally now presenting it to you for approval. Coincidentally, this is also in line with your, uh, bond expenditure table that you received earlier for this particular expense. Uh, which does show, um, this particular. Sanitary sewer overflow situation that we're having, particularly this is the one that's listed on your table as Bayou Road. Hence why on the attachment, we showed as a separate highlight to show that's what it is. We anticipate for this project to be done ra- rather quickly. And, uh, we were asking for your approval to move this item forward with the expenditure to come out of the appropriate bond, or excuse me, CO.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia or Rick?
Which table are you referring to? This table? But, but, but once again, uh, Mayor, you said, we have not taken any action on this thing. Now that we're taking action on an item on this table. Doesn't make sense to me.
So if I can may interject a few things real quick, um. Mayor and Council, the, uh, the item here that we have before you is, is a sanitary sewer repair. Which is mandated under the TCQ because of SSOs we continue to have on Bayou Road. The repair will, uh, fix that SSO that's been occurring for multiple years. What council is actually approving tonight is basically the engineering agreement of twenty nine thousand dollars. We, we're bringing forward the total project cost. So you understand. The total project cost of two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The construction estimate is done preliminarily by engineering right now because there are no plans. Until the plans get done and they, they tighten up the numbers. We don't know exactly what that project's gonna cost. Typically on a preliminary engineering estimate, those numbers are high. Um, we can bring back the funding agreement for council approval. But what we're trying to move forward right now is basically a twenty nine thousand dollar engineering agreement. We do have on this agenda item to fund that twenty nine thousand dollars out of the twenty sixteen bond money. Um, which is dedicated towards SSOs according to the bond that was, was pulled in twenty sixteen. That is one of the items that, that that bond was actually taken out for was SSOs. Um, and this is an SSO repair. We're, we're fixing two lines, the Bayou sanitary sewer main. Um, that hits the, um, the main trunk line on, on Main Street. And also another, um, sanitary sewer main for Erickson, uh, which is also in, uh, really bad shape. So we're doing both of those. These are gonna cause. The price is a little high because we've actually got to do, um, uh, open digging on, on Main Street on Techside right away in order to fix these pies.
So help me out, my, my hard head, my testa luda. So you're, you're the logic behind this expenditure, the logic now on the. Is that we're taking twenty nine thousand. That not from the general revenue fund. You're, you're asking our permission to take it from the proceeds, the leftover proceeds. Of the twenty sixteen CO. That was dedicated to utility infrastructure. And, uh, which is the leftover of that is the five hundred and fifty five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And then, so you're asking us to take from that five fifty five, this twenty nine thousand.
Yes, sir. That's all we, that's all we have on the table to you tonight is an engineering agreement.
As we do with all of our projects, we bring them back to you after the, uh, bid document would be prepared. For you to review and then for you to release that bid if you wanted to. And then. If and when somebody is awarded, we bring that back to you a third time for you to prove them to come forward.
And, and so therefore in the future, if you could do me the favor, is just to say that, right?
I tried to say it in the agenda as much as I could.
That I understand, right?
It's twenty nine thousand dollars is the expenditure you're approving tonight out of the twenty sixteen CO bond.
And, and, and I'm not, and I'm not mayor and I'm not. You belong to us and good, God bless you. That, but and once, once again, Mr. City Manager, I, I'm not trying to impugn your, your. Your honesty in any way or anything anybody. But we have in the past seen things that get snuck in. And we're not aware of them, right? Just so that's why I'm.
We, um, I am not light foot to be sneaking anything around. Um, we're. Clearly bringing this to you, you're, you're gonna see this item two more times. Assuming that it gets approved tonight, you would see it again when the bid would go out for a set project. And again, whenever a set contract would be approved.
And so once again, in my little hard head, I'm gonna put here minus from that five fifty five minus twenty nine thousand.
Yes, and specifically if you want, under the table where it says twenty sixteen or that two twenty five eight hundred. You can additionally also subtract. So you see which project amount would be less. Cause then that would put the construction at about one ninety. Yes, sir. That would be that project.
So that particular street, Ericus, um, Ericus son, I think. Erickson, um, I did get several calls. Uh, on that street, that, that group, that whole area has really suffered in the area of water. And sewer. So I, I do hope that this council does not kick this down the. Kick this issue down the can, cause I have several church members that live over there and they have had sewer issues, water issues. For years.
Just to fix the sewer issue.
I hope that it does.
And both of them will get fixed. I mean, we, the, the Erickson problem came up. Six months ago, we identified exactly what the problem was. Um, it has not had necessarily. As severe of SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows that the Bayou line has had. The Bayou, this, the manhole, it, it, many people have noticed the, the manhole on Bayou, uh. Just south of Scott overflowing when it rains. Reported. And it's because of this, uh, blockage down at Main Street that we need to fix.
Any more questions? We have a motion to approve. Is it second?
Second, sorry.
And any further discussion?
I'm so sorry, I missed the motion.
Uh, Mayor Proton?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine three resolution number R dash two zero two three dash zero zero five three authorizing the construction design and engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Specifically the headworks area consisting of the bar screen and influent, uh, valves. Uh, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mayor, uh, thank you. This is another much needed item that we've been working on to get this, this, uh, document ready to bring forward. Again, um. Rick has explained to us already what the need is as far as the actual wastewater treatment plant. Uh, at length, this is a very costly project. Uh, the engineering alone is roughly a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. Uh, that we need to move quickly, similar to the last item that we just had you listen to. Same way, first the engineering, then we would bring back bid documents and then an award. Uh, so, so we can commence the project. Uh, these, this project in particular is slated to come out of the twenty twenty CO bond. Uh, it is specifically titled, uh, WWTP, which stands for wastewater treatment plant bar screen. At a total construction estimated construction cost of roughly one point four eight six. Go around up to one point five, of which we expect the, uh, engineering to be roughly a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. If you have no further questions, we will entertain.
Any questions?
Yeah, um, in your breakdown description here where it said head, headworks equipment. Uh, screen equipment costs two hundred and forty six thousand seven fifty. And then you have a cost column of three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Washer compactor equipment costs ninety one thousand five hundred with a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand. Subtotal four hundred and seventy five thousand. What's the extra? Seventy eight thousand two hundred and fifty for the screen and the extra fifty eight thousand five hundred. For the washer compactor.
The valve, the influence valves to that, that facility, they, neither one of them work and we. Have to change those valves in order to do this work. We have to be able to stop the flow into that channel. So both of those valves, there's two, there's two sets of valves that, that will be replaced with this project. There's some concrete work that's getting done also. On that deck, the, the bar screen sits on an elevated deck at the wastewater treatment plant.
Any more questions?
And once again, what we're asking for tonight is approval for the engineering owner.
Or Rick, I, I want if. So there's no confusion. You, I, I'm recall, this had been previously discussed. At one point, I maybe may have been.
In the past.
Couple of times, couple of times.
So. For everyone's. Well, let me put it this way, I, I'll explain it from, from my understanding. We have been very successful in receiving a substantial grant. From the GLO to construct a new wastewater. Uh, sewer facility.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And this particular request has nothing to do with the new. Facility and the GLO funding. This is for our existing.
Yes, sir.
The wastewater facility.
Right.
That has this particular need and, uh, that it's previously, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And, and to clarify, just for everybody's sake. The, the reason that this is getting funding outside of the GLO money because the GLO money could only be used if we elevated the existing plant. And that will cost many, many, many dollars. So we're, we're not elevating the plant, but we're doing some existing work. We're doing about a hundred thousand dollars worth of work right now. Uh, with blowers and disinfection and things like that. This is a, this headworks project and this bar screen, which has recently failed again on us a couple of times during the night. So we're bringing staff in. We've had. Um, sanitary sewer overflows at the treatment plant because when the bar screen stops working. It clogs up from debris and the water starts going on the ground instead of through the system. And once again, that's a reportable SSO, uh, uh, to TCQ. So. This bar screen's been a real headache for many, many, many years. Um, and we're planning to fix it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine four. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero zero five four accepting the twenty twenty three city of Lamarc investment policy. To invest mu- uh, municipal funds per the Public Funds Investment Act. Do you have any questions concerning resolution? Item, excuse me, nine four.
Uh, the mayor, uh, I do have a, once again, I don't know. I attended the training on this in the past. And after that training, I asked, I, I guess our then fiscal financial director. Asked if we had accounts outside of. Some of the, um. The, uh, Texas Municipal League. Funds, investment fund. And I, I didn't receive any. So I'm curious, we're passing a policy with regard to. Um, investment entities, right? But I'd like to know what? What entities are we, are we using at some point? What brokers are we using? I recall this was something my first year of council. I also asked because there was a company, um, in the, um. In Switzerland. And I said, uh, having lived there, I thought that was interesting and dealt with that group. But, um, I, I'm just making the inquiry, Mr. City Manager.
So the mayor Proton, I could, uh, look into that and get back to you. I know that this is something that.
Here they are, Texpool, Logic, these are the four. That's, that, that was it. Yeah.
These are the pools that council.
Exactly.
Well, the, these are the pools that past council approved for us to use. Now, as far as broker, we only have coastal and the other ones no longer, uh, they're, they're, they're no longer existing in our policy. Quite frankly, we have not been using any brokers. We've been just investing money into pools because. In the past, for a period of time during COVID, the interest rates have been extremely, extremely low. So we, we just thought that it was best to diversify, have them within the pools. Now, interest rate just now become, you know, much, much better than those years. So, but we have not had the opportunity to utilize any of the brokers yet to, to help us with. Moving, uh, sort of away from the pools and, and get into treasuries or. Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, we ha- we have not utilized them yet, even though coastal is still on our list. Um, as approved broker to be used. And we really should be looking at treasuries and things like that. But like I said, interest rates just recently just, just rose and we just haven't had an opportunity. But I think we. Interest rate, as long as it maintains this level, we, we really probably should go into the brokers and, and start looking. Um, elsewhere as well as staying within the pools.
No, I appreciate that too, because I think you remember I sent you the.
Yes, I do.
Received, right? The recommendations in there, just as you said, especially rates go higher.
That's correct. That is correct. But you also, and, and you, you mentioned it, you've been through the training. As you know, if we go through the brokers, we too. Having to evaluate the bids, we're not gonna go with just one thing. Brokers, ABC tells us, hey, this looks good. And we invest right into that instant. We're gonna make them go to the market and look at the different quotes. And then we evaluate, we assess, and you know, go through the formal bidding, just, just, just like we should. That takes, that's a process. That takes time too. So, and, and like I said, right now with higher interest rates, we should. And maybe that's something that we can, we can start doing, um, in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Yes, sir.
Were we, uh, here? A motion?
We need a motion, sir.
Need a motion for item nine. Four.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine five resolution number R dash two zero two three dash zero zero five five authorizing the city manager to sign a contract amendment with. Uh, Emergicon LLC to include five building services provided by a subsidiary of Emergicon LLC. Emergifier LLC, uh, Caesar.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had this discussion, uh, over there, not only through budget process, but also when we passed, uh, the other process earlier. So we've asked, uh, both our attorney and our fire chief to work together on this item. Uh, we did go on the conservative route. Should it be passed as to where we think the revenue would be in the first year? Um, we, 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 we did heed to that middle ground where we were. And some that we've talked about, debated, we actually also included some of the information and some of the language, Gus, uh, help me out here. To make sure that the, the needs were addressed. Excuse me one second, guys.
Did you want to, uh, pick up chief?
Uh, the only thing that I will say is that, uh, Gus and I discussed it in. This is an addendum to the existing contract and we, we added the. We added the verbiage and I believe, um. Gus, you're gonna have to help me. I'm looking at this, it didn't.
Sure, sure. So we added verbiage that, um, there are excluded duties of Emergifier. What we heard from council is that council did not want residents getting bills directly submitted to them. So an excluded duty, something Emergifier does not do is submit bills directly to residents of Lamarc.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Chief or Gus? Thank you, gentlemen. We will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item nine six resolution number R dash two zero two three dash zero zero five six. Discussion and required action regarding approving the Gulf Coast Water Authority project funding request, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, uh, Mayor, following, uh, through the budget discussion, we understand that we have the pending. Uh, share that we need to pay from the Gulf Coast Water Authority, uh, Shane and Project. Our share equates to roughly a hundred eighty three thousand seven hundred eighty two dollars. We had an option of either paying a lump sum on October one, twenty twenty-three coming up when, in just a, a small time. Or we can finance that out. Uh, it'd be prudent for us to make the payment now. We do have the funding source to come out through the actual bond payment. It is an allowable payment as well. Otherwise, the payment would have been almost double, I think it was roughly three hundred and sixty thou-
Three fifty-four, four sixty-five.
Three fifty-four, so if we choose to finance it, it could be three fifty-four. Or we can make the payment now, it is an allowable expense, it was a pending expense. Uh, that was tied to uh the reason why the twenty twenty bond was actually included. Uh, so, so that, that was part of the intended purpose to do so.
Any questions for? Um, Rick or uh Caesar as relates to item nine five, nine six, excuse me? Uh, we will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Good second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number call for the vote, all those in favor. I, any opposed? Item ten, city manager report, a submitted. Uh, submitted report. Uh, to update council and community on standard operations of city. The report can be acknowledged as a whole or discussed at the pleasure of council. And Mr. Garcia.
Mayor, I have nothing for this report at this time, however, uh, we will have something more fluid for the next one. Uh, we'll just, you know, just focus on the agenda, that's, that's what we did this past cycle.
Very good. Item eleven, new business items presented to council for discussion and possible action. Eleven one memorandum of understanding, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Gulf Coast Center and the City of La Mark, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Any further discussion? On uh this, the group? Hearing number will call for the vote, all those in favor. I, any opposed? Uh, let the record reflect that uh Mayor Proton stepped up. Item uh eleven two memorandum of understanding, authorizing a memorandum of understanding. Between the Resource Crisis Center and the City of La Mark, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote, all those in favor. I, any opposed? Item eleven three, request for proposal, authorizing the issuance for a request for proposal. For municipal court associate judge and a request for qualifications. For professional services for the municipal court associate judge, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mayor, uh, you, we, we were asked to make sure that we uh bring this forward. We did go through the edited copy, we made sure we, we updated the copy and it's here for us to have associate judge services. Should our judge not be able, be out of town or just not be available to, to uh serve that, that, that we would have a associate uh judge available.
Very good. I will uh. First, council, do we have any discussion on this item? And then I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for vote, all those in favor. Uh, any opposed? Item eleven four, investment quarterly report, discussion, possible action regarding accepting the re- uh quarterly investment reports. For second quarter twenty twenty-three. Uh, Mr. Garcia, is there any items, no?
No, sir, um, as is usual custom, quarterly report available for your review.
Uh, any questions on the uh quarterly, quarterly report? I have one, um, it seems to be on page two forty-seven, Mr. Garcia, uh, Suzie, are you available? Okay. Mr. Garcia. Uh, page two uh forty-seven, it looks like there is a two million dollar. Uh, drop uh in the report from six thirty twenty twenty-three. Uh, between six thirty twenty twenty-three and three thirty of twenty twenty-three, negative two point two million dollars. Uh, and the description uh underneath says. Uh, there's a change of a negative two million dollars was due to paying for operating expenditures. After peak revenues collections period, would you explain that, please?
Mayor, you have to give me a second here.
Sure.
Give me a second, Mayor, if we can come back. Try and get you that response.
Okay.
Maybe I don't have all the information for me to answer that question.
Sure.
So if I can come back and answer that question for you.
Uh, sure, I'd like that question to be answered, uh, uh, certainly via email to council.
Absolutely.
As well as uh, uh, in the very next council meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any uh, any more questions relating to item nine? Uh, excuse me, eleven.
That's what you want.
Four. Eleven four, I'll entertain a motion. To accept.
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote, all those in favor. I, any opposed? Item eleven five, Galveston County Mutual Aid Contract, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Galveston County Commission Court. To provide fire protection services to unincorporated areas of the county, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mayor, as is usual custom for us to. Bring this forward, I see Chief is here to explain that as well as far as mutual aid. Um, mutually is something that's common throughout different cities for us to offer, uh, crossing boundaries, should there be a deficit of service at any route. Chief?
Uh, just to, just to clarify this one, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
Excuse me. This contract is for the county commissioner's office, for us to help provide. Mutual aid services to the unincorporated areas of Galveston County. Um, the other areas such as. The neighboring cities, we have mutually contracts with those guys too, but. This is specifically relating to the unincorporated areas of Galveston County where we respond. Last year, we ran roughly forty calls in the um, unincorporated areas of. Galveston County, and just for some other. Other useful information, um, your La Mark Fire Department responded to seven hundred and forty calls for mutual aid last year alone. So the, the uptick is definitely there in the call volume across the county. Countywide, there, everybody's busier, not just us.
Any questions? Chief, is there any consideration by the county, as you said earlier that. Uh, there, the, the call volume had increased for, for us as, as it relates to responding.
Yes, sir.
To uh, to the unincorporated areas. Has there been any consideration by the county to increase the uh? The amount of revenue? That they expend to us?
Not to my knowledge at this time. Um, certainly, that was, that's a question that can be posed, but um, as of right now, the, the same. It's the same boilerplate contract that you've, you've seen for, for years. And just note, in our call volume from. What, what I tracked that we ran last year in the unincorporated areas wasn't far from what we ran this year.
Yeah.
Um, but in, as a whole to the county, you know, the areas, all of the jurisdictions are getting busier. In this area, so. Um, the call volume is still pretty close, I believe, I don't have the numbers from last year, but I think we ran. Twenty-seven or twenty-nine calls in the unincorporated area, and this year we're at thirty, or at forty, so. A slight increase, but not, not a. Not as significant as the rest of the, you know, mutuating our neighboring cities.
Right. Very good, any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing number will call for the vote, all those in favor. I, any opposed? Item uh twelve, executive session, there are no issues uh for executive session. Uh, consequently, there are no actions to be taken from executive session, so that leaves us. Uh, I believe. Uh, at adjournment, but I would be remiss if we did not allow for our council persons to make uh any requests. Uh, is that, is that allowable, Gus?
That's fine.
Will allow council to make any requests. Uh, or uh provide any community updates uh as they see fit. Uh, let's uh start with Mr. Ross.
Um. Just want to thank Parks Board for going out and painting the age frames, that was a little fun event. Um. And remind people, September sixteenth, P O W M I A. Uh, Remembrance Day at V F W. Hall, and we have a District D cleanup on Saturday. That's really all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, Ms. Yancy.
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending Justin Williams Lamar's own Justin Williams uh. Film debut premiere in Houston, and it, it makes La Mark look very good. I was very proud to say I was from La Mark. Um, it showed uh some of our buildings in the movies such as Evelyn's and Art of Coffee and the high school. And it was just a good feeling to be a part of La Mark on um, on Saturday night. And there are a lot of people from other places, Mayor. Um, but everyone was talking about La Mark because the, the movie is based, it's a teen movie, very clean movie. Um, is based on a high school story, so it was nice to be a part of that experience. And of course, we gave him a proclamation, naming um, August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, Justin Williams Day. So we have some up and coming um. Stars, and so he's hoping to uh get picked up and um, they will probably do a private screening at the high school as well. Um, the other thing I want to, to, to pray for the victims of Jacksonville, Florida. Uh, the shooting victim at um, North Carolina. As well, and pray for our country that um, we come together as Americans. Um, you know, it's a sad day in America when you can go to the store. And just be blindly killed just for the color of your skin. And so I'm praying for our nation that we remember what we do have in common. And that's liberty and our freedom and that we are here to protect one another. Um, and to our mayor, I am praying for you, I heard your heart in that. I'm praying for your family, because we are a community. That we support one another, we love each other, even through hard times. And so I would hope that our community, I would encourage our mayor, uh, we've, we're doing a lot in this city. A lot in this city, uh, we're experiencing cleanups, I think you're doing cleanups almost every two weeks in District D. So our community is working together. Um, I'm having a town hall and cleanup on September thirtieth. Uh, we've got developers coming and visiting, visit, visiting us. And this council and this staff, they have worked very hard. To make sure that La Ma- La Mark continues to shine, and we're beginning to see some of that begin to manifest. But what's important to me. As an educator. And as a woman of faith. Is that we would bond together when people are going through hard times. And that will be, we will be intelligent, and, and those of us that believe in Christ, like I do. That we will love each other, and so to my community, I say I love you. And to my, my community, I say, hold on, better days are coming, you're gonna be really excited about the next few months. That's gonna happen, uh, the new developments that's coming, I'm real proud, and last, and Saturday. Knowing what I know about this city and everything that's happening, to sit there and see that La Mark. Was on the credits, La Mark and the kids were proud to say, and that's how La Mark was when I was growing up, when I lived in Clear Lake. And we looked down the road to see such proud people from the city of La Mark. And to my council and to our mayor, I'm glad that those days are back. So, thanks so much, that's all I have. Happy Labor Day. They say.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy.
Mayor Proton?
First, I want to send a shout out to my. Classmates. Much as I hate to say it, it was a fifty-year anniversary for my class of nineteen seventy-three of La Mark High School. And um. Uh, we were the first. Class, and sometimes we, we do a terrible job of remembering our history. Our history in this community was a separate, but, but equal at one time. So we had our black school and we had our Anglo school. And uh, the. Independent School District at that time decided that enough of this, and they built. The present site of Little Mark High School. And my class of seventy-three was the first class to complete all three years there. Uh, in those days, La Mark was known as the um. The, you, you, you were looking to strive to be like La Mark, right? The Friendswood, the, and um, and certainly we had our share of scholars and stuff. Heck, they even thought I was smart for a while too, so. Uh, and uh, I fooled them good, but the, the, um, so, but shout out to them, they've accomplished a lot. Um, we also have memories of those. Classmates that are not with us. And uh, so, I, I just want to acknowledge that, and of course, um. Uh, it was great to see, to um, read about the history and what they've accomplished as well too. I want to send a thanks to uh, Mr. Tony Padua and his family. Who are the developers of the Trails of Woodhaven. Uh, if you don't know about the Trails of Woodhaven, you need to know about it, it's right there next to Salt Grass. Uh, you, they're being very aggressive in terms of their development. It will be uh, one of the. Few. Areas that will have amenities for seniors, active seniors. Part of it's a lake, uh, they will have um. Uh, food preparation, different, different activities as well too, especially if you're interested in downsizing. I've asked Mr. Padua to come and keep us informed of the progress of that development. And um, and also, um, he's, as a result of some follow-up and discussions, possibly looking at more things. They already have one facility in Conroe that, that is, has a waiting list of individuals to move into that community. Uh, and um, I want to thank also Mr. Padua for his willingness, speaking of films, uh, Ms. Yancy. Uh, the Houston Galveston Area Council. Uh, authorized a film to talk about development in smaller communities. La Mark will be prominently featured in that film, which will be distributed nationally. Among the uh various councils of governments. Uh, and Mr. Padua was interviewed for that. And talking about uh what other communities should be aware of. And uh, I want to thank him and the Houston Galveston Area Council for their willingness to include La Mark in that particular uh effort, which um. Uh, as soon as it's, it's out, we'll, we'll get a copy of. And uh, likewise, safe, everybody enjoy your Labor Day and be safe out there, especially in the freeway. God knows the, the chief, both chiefs can attest to uh the terrible traffic situations that we've had there on forty-five. So be careful. I prefer to keep to the frontage road, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Proton. Uh, Caesar. Um, I'm, I want to have provided for the council next. Uh, meeting a true uh amount of uh revenue for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three from the permitting department. Their projection was three million, uh, and it was not even a projection uh for the end of this fiscal year. Our projection was twenty-one hundred. We, we need to know what, what, what we will end at so that we can be sure to budget accordingly. Um, so if we can have that next uh, next meeting. Um, also, I would, I'd like to hear ideas um, next meeting. Concerning activities for our seniors. There, there's a uh. Healthy discussion happening uh online right now. As relates to opportunities uh for our seniors. Uh, and, and I would like to at least. Uh, as a council, have a, some sort of a, a focus or interest group formed to ascertain what our seniors would like. Uh, healthy discussion, there were meetings proposed, uh, and all sorts of different types of activities. Um, but, but, but what I did get out of that is our seniors are eager to be a part of the conversation. Uh, and they want to be included in, in all of those new amenities. So, so if we could certainly uh move, move in that space to be proactive. As proactive as we possibly can. I wanted to, to certainly say uh that I am proud of the work the Parks Board has been doing, tremendous amounts of work. Uh, it seems that there have been more opportunities for young people. Uh, in our community through the Parks Board this summer. There certainly have been more opportunities to volunteer. For for our residents through the Park Board, Parks Board this this spring and this summer. And I'm proud of the work that they've they're doing, I look forward to the continued work that they will do. And as I thought about this, it reminded me of Mac, of Mac McGaffey. Of 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 his passion and his vision for our parks and for the Parks Board, and I I think. That that so far, what we have seen from the Parks Board in twenty twenty three, I believe the Mac McGaffey that I've known, that I knew for twenty. Years would be pleased at the progress that the Parks Board is making. I I wanted to also give kudos to the Lamarck Police Department, there has been another cold case solved. Another cold case solved, again, another step toward being the safest city in Texas. Our police department is serious about about that that challenge and about that goal. And I wanted to congratulate them on the work that they've done. And I wanted to certainly ask Mr. Garcia if we could have that next meeting a safe city update. Where are we, I know we're in the midst of year two, moving into year three, where are we, Chief, what what does? What what does those numbers look like moving forward? Lastly, Happy Labor Day to all of us who are members of. The labor force or who have been members of the labor force. It's not limited to organized labor, although we always consider them to be the object of labor. But it is also reflective of those workers at the subways, at the corner stores. At the Walmarts and the like, all of those persons are in the labor force, and when we celebrate this coming Monday, let's be reminded. That those persons that we engage every day are also part of our labor force. We ought to celebrate them as well. Lastly, there will always be distractions. Certainly, there will be al- always be distractions in life, there will always be distractions in. In community, but we have to learn to keep the main thing, the main thing, and as far as I'm concerned, the main thing is about Lamarck, and when I look at Lamarck. I look at reduced taxes and reduced crime, when I look at Lamarck, I see more jobs, I see streets being improved. I see infrastructure being improved and upgraded and new infrastructure being built, I see all sorts of positive things happening within our community, there'll always be distractions. But we have to remain focused, as a council, we can and we will remain focused, we will address. Certainly factual information, we won't continue to go down rabbit holes, but we'll continue to do the work of the people. Done with that part of our presentation, and now we'll move to dismiss wonderful, wonderful meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we stand adjourned.